Is anybody there?
I can hear you Quinn, it's Sherry. They're still having problems.
Okay, I was wondering. Not the problem, am I?
No.
(laughing)
It's the system in the city.[651.34][651.34](laughing)
I usually get the blame, so I just want to check.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I can't hear anything.
They can still hear us. So if you guys can mute, I'm told they can hear us, but we cannot hear them yet. They're trying to fix it. I've been in contact with John. They're still trying to fix it.
Oh, okay. They'll unmute me as soon as they come on. It's 71 degrees, well. Or is it going to... That's the passes. (noise) This is a box that's... (noise) Maybe they're going to skip the meeting. Maybe.
On that one.
Hey Quinn, it's Sherri. They're still doing a training. They probably have about ten more minutes left, and then we're gonna see if we can't get this to work again.
They're what? They're doing what?
A training.
Why couldn't I hear the thing?
The training that was in the packet. We can't hear it. It's broken.
Oh, I...
We're gonna see if we can't get it started again.
That's what's messed up. Okay.
Yeah, it's broken right now. We're gonna see if we can't get it working again here in a minute.
But if they can't, what are they gonna do? Call a meeting?
I don't know yet. We're, we're working on that.
Oh, okay. I'm playing the game, so I don't care. I live alone, so I talk to myself. Let somebody else come up with it. That. You don't wanna talk. Figured it out. There you go. The training or how to fix the training. Bless him, Mark. I know he's gone for a week. I read his email. Read his email. I think the training is in getting the training fixed.
This is Sherri. John, can you hear me?
Yeah, no worries.
Oh, can you hear me? Oh, no, that was Jason. Jason, so everybody online on this side is experiencing issues right now?
Yes, of course. I may have been you up something. That's the natural office.
Jason, can you mute yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we're having problems on this side. Quinn, can you mute yourself too, please?
Can I what?
Can you put the mute again? Yes, please.
How can I mute myself? Let me find out how to mute myself. I don't know how I...
I believe it's star four if you're on the phone.
Oh, okay. I'm on the...
Star four, yeah. Perfect, thank you. We're trying to get it going right now. Um, if you'll just stand by, um, we're gonna see if we can get this working. If not, um, I'll let you know what's happening. So just give me a few minutes here.
Please, in the meeting.
We can see you guys now? Can you hear me?
You are now unmuted.
Can you hear me? So they're saying they still can't hear me. Can you see? Brian, can you see people yet?
Uh, yes. Can you hear me?
Okay. I can hear you. We can hear each other on this side, but they can't hear us yet.
It looks like they're still muted.
I know. Um, I've told them and they said they can't get it unmuted.
From your email, it's a, it's there, it's not every single place that you've copied it to do they now need to get access to. It's if you have that record in that email, then that is something that the, the requester would get access to that record through that email. It's not, they're not gonna dig through every single place that it's been copied to or transferred from.
Uh, Josh Gonzalez, uh, Arts Commissioner, uh, A.R.S. There's also such a thing as a working draft, isn't there? There's a working draft and it's not liable to the, the, you know, to the PR, PR stuff.
Um, usually not. I think usually what we ask from the staff or commissioners is that you'll get an email saying, hey, we're looking for this. You'll search what you have, and then it goes through the Public Records Act, people at the city, for them to go through and determine whether or not it's responsive. There's a whole bunch of flow charts that we work through. Um, so the best thing is, you know, just provide it to staff so they can make the decision. Um, when in doubt, we're going to send it out, and that's why it's really important just to, you know, follow the, you know, the golden rule of how would this look if this was on the front page of the newspaper. It's, you know, just a working draft, probably nobody's gonna read it. It's now...
Jessica Benin from the Planning Commission. Um, so my question is, if we delete something, like you were, we downloaded something and we deleted, is that, like, should we just not delete anything, or... Or?
Given my, nothing is ever really.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. If I was like, oh, I feel like this dump or like I'm not doing, I deleted, is that a problem? Should I just not delete anything?
If you've downloaded it, it's available from a downloadable source, then it's got two separate areas for it. Like I said, it's not going to go through everywhere where that person, that thing has been downloaded to or transferred from. It's just that they need to have access to it somewhere.
Joseph Pranke from the Design Commission also. So I'm just doing this as kind of a final clarification that essentially if I download, we receive plans and constructions for the Design Commission every time you have a meeting. If I download that from the meeting, I could basically just, if someone says that they want public records, I can literally just cite that email and that's basically it because that's where the download came from.
Yep.
There you go.
Any other questions? Diane Hoover, Park to Restore. Is there going to be a record of us that attended this so that we know?
I think that, yeah, we.
That we're approved.
I'll have you down for the next four years.
Is this where you have the chat? Okay, are there any further questions? Okay, let's move on. So now we have council open discussion. Any council members concerned that they wish to discuss that? I believe Councilmember Watson just raised his.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just let you know I attended the Major's Families meeting on June 2nd along with Brian Jeter and David Wells. David Wells does his presentation on what's going on in Bonnie Lake this summer on stage and public events. Somebody talked about the Ruvar days. He talked about the graduations and an important thing they talked about going forward, the free health clinics on June 25th for both Sumner and Bonnie Lake area in Spanish, English, and other languages. That's coming up, that's free for anyone. And also they have free English classes going forward, starting May 31st to August 30th. And that would include a number of languages that you see across here on my sheet of paper, including Ukraine. I have a friend in the city and her son is trying to learn how to get a job. He actually signed up for it last week and starts one of the lessons up first and fourth floor and it's free.
Well, thanks very much.
Very much aware of that.
Where will the free clinics, free health exams happen?
Faithful Covenant Church, Washington Street, Sumner. Saturday, June 25th at 11:30 a.m. And the English lessons will be portable down in Sumner on Lowell Street.
All right. Thank you, Councilmembers Swam and Watson. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing no further open discussion, we have review of Councilmember Minutes, Councilmember Watson.
Those are good.
Oh, very good.
Good job.
Now we have one discussion item and it will be on the BNO tax. And Ms. Rosson, you ready to proceed?
I am. We can all see and hear finally again, so I'll try to make my presentation quick. It sounds like the owl is on the fritz over there. So I sent you all the packet over a week ago so that you could review it before the meeting. Basically, it's a continuation discussion on the BNO tax that we had started this retreat. And in the email, I told you that I had two questions. One, do you want to pass a BNO tax? And two, what exemption levels? So if you have questions, we'll start there.
Well, I do know that Councilmember Evans was discussing this with me prior to the meeting. Councilmember Evans, did you have any?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much for putting that packet together. That was super helpful, super helpful in determining what the best starting point would be for that. And thanks for your discussion prior to this about that. So just some background on this. I know we talked about a BNO tax and we talked about a small business exemption. Sheri on page 90, I believe, put in that small business exemption for most of the cities in Washington State. I believe it's 91 that have that exemption. It's the far right column, annual threshold. So it's small, average small businesses, and this is from Fundra is the source here. One to four employees is about 387,000 a year. And this is sales. Five to nine is a little over a million. 10 to 19 employees is a little over 2.1 million. 20 to 100 is about 7.1 million. Now, that's average across the nation, so, you know, that take in mind some of the smaller businesses we have here. To answer Sheri's first question, I would be in favor of this. To answer her second question, being that we believe in small business, there are three cities on this list that have a million dollar threshold. I'd like for us to be the fourth one on that. That would be a savings of $2,000 per small business. So if they made a million dollars or less, wouldn't pay anything of this BNO tax. If they made a million and a half, their BNO tax would only be based on that half million beyond the one million dollar threshold. Just to put that into perspective, for every million dollars, this .002% BNO tax is $2,000. So for every million, it's 2,000. They did 3 million, it's a $6,000 hit. Their first million would be excluded, so they'd have a $4,000 BNO tax bill at the end of the year. Most of what I find with what small businesses are, that waiver would probably exclude most of the small businesses that we shop at every day. So that's where I would like to maybe start the discussion is a million dollars or a $2,000 credit on that.
Okay. May I comment on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Or actually, it's a couple of questions. I was looking at this list today and it is quite a diverse list, especially when it comes to population. And my first question being the annual exemption here, that is gross receipts, right? We're just talking about what they would earn. Okay. And would we be wanting to do this quarterly or annually?
To be determined. I think it's going to depend on the amount they permit.
Doesn't it follow the standard reporting requirements for VNR?
It looks like each city on this list here has a quarterly or a threshold annual.
Right.
I don't know if it's just the annual divided by four, that's what it appears to be.
Oh, is that, you're just talking about the threshold?
Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't change your reporting requirements because of the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, are you done, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So we talked about that in, I believe it was 2020, the city of Bonnie Lake brought in. Businesses were about, what, 782 million, something in that ballpark. Just in the last 20 minutes, I looked at our top 10 businesses in Bonnie Lake. Costco, Walmart, Target, Home Depot, Lowe's, Fred Meyer, Safeway, Peter, Kohl's, Marshalls, Famous Footwear and Rite Aid. That's actually 11. Looking at average sales per square foot and the square foot that the county lists us at, that equates to 618 million of that 780 million. So that right there is the lion's share of who will be paying this BNO tax. The, and I'm sure the next 10 after that would probably fall in that range as well, over a million dollars. So when it comes down to our small businesses, make up a very small fraction of what this BNO tax would be and excluding them wouldn't be a significant difference. If we only did that top 11, that 618 million would equal 1.236 million in annual revenues. And on a park bond at $75,000 per million, that's 16.4 million we could bond against with just those top 11. So, you know, and all those top 11, this is, they have this, and I mean, as you can see on this list, almost every one of these cities has a Walmart, Target, Costco. This is the cost of doing business and it's something that is so marginal for them that it's just something they have on a line item on their budget.
Which actually was my third question on that. The ones who are listed having a million dollar threshold, I'm looking at Bramerton, Burlington, Everson, and where's the fourth?
That was it. Bonnie.
And I'm not sure of how big their retail or commercial centers are. Do we have any data on that as far as how big their?
Not yet. It's something I'd look in, I'd like to look into.
Okay. And you mentioned Kohl's, which I don't believe that has contributed.
Not yet, but on average, it's about 16 million annually sales.
It annually in sales in the community of this.
Yeah, based on square footage, yeah. Gotcha.
Councilmember Ford.
Sorry. I can address your other question, Mayor. If you look on page 111 of the Administrative Procedures, it talks about reporting periods and this is what we would bring forward to the council for approval once this is passed. Some people would report quarterly, some would do annually, and I imagine we would probably have the larger entities report monthly.
Okay. Well, and of course, that's something that we can decide in the future as the committee. Go through the process. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rosson.
I wasn't planning on going. Sorry. I think there's a delay, so you start talking and I start talking. This was going to go to a committee. This was so that I can get the ordinance prepared for council's consideration. I need to know if, yes, you want it to go forward and then the exemption amount so I can bring it forward.
Yeah, I don't, actually, in looking at the rules and we had a big presentational program meetings act, I believe we would have to vote to see whether we could come up with an exception tonight because that would be an action. And then we'd have to ask our board whether they want to comment on it.
I'm not needing action. I need to know the majority so that I can bring out ordinance forward. You have no ordinance to go for consideration tonight.
We are allowed to. According to OPMA, this is a public meeting.
Yes.
Correct? I am allowed to express whether or not I support.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Just checking. I think tonight we have to be exceptionally careful. If not now, Councilmember Baldwin, you have a question.
My question is, are, is this going to go into general fund? Or is this going to go into a restricted fund for parks so that we can get a bond asked?
Sorry. I was going to answer the finance director.
How, Ms. Rosson, is the council member up?
The technical answer is it's unrestricted revenues, meaning it would go to the general fund. The council can then make an action by resolution or ordinance to determine the percent that you want to the general fund, to the parks fund, to the street fund, whatever fund or project you choose. You could do that every budget season. You could do that yearly. You could do it one time, it's up to the council.
So that ultimate is it? Councilmember Baldwin, you have a question?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you so much, Sheri, for preparing this. Certainly read through it. Really complicated language, but, you know, eventually did understand it. And thank you also, Councilmember Evans, for telling us a little bit more information. Couple of statements and even just thoughts. I know our original goal was to try to get, you know, the big box stores. And, you know, you've named 11 of them. I think one of them wasn't a big box. I think it's Peter, right? That was the one that is not considered a big box.
I mean, being the biggest building in the entire city, there's probably a significant amount of revenues there that may be equal to or greater than.
I would consider the more local business really, but I hear what you're saying. I'm referring to businesses that are all over the United. And so in reference to these businesses, you're telling us about 618 million is what, you know, what they would be bringing in. I'm still looking at about $170 million, you know, here that I still have questions about. I'm not sure. Because what I don't want to happen is for us to say, okay, we got the businesses that could certainly, you know, like you said, it's a line item. Anyway, this wouldn't hurt their overall budget, but I just don't want any businesses to slip through the cracks because I'm looking at, you said, about five to nine employees, you're looking at about a million dollars, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I know $2,000 is like, oh, that's nothing, but it still is a business, is a local business. I would begrudgingly pay that $2,000. And so, and I think the other thing that is concerning to me is that it is a million dollars, yes, but it's on the gross receipts. And so I don't know that that's, I feel like a million dollars is a very much, I mean, it's not. I am not a fan of having a deal at a million. I know that I'm seeing that there are three cities total on here, so obviously they have the highest threshold, so that's great. I'm still feeling like that's going to bite some of our businesses that we don't want to bite.
Yes.
I don't, yeah, I don't feel good about the million, is what I'll say.
Well, my initial was two and Sheri thought that might be excessive for the moment. Famous Footwear is about 3 million.
Okay.
So if that helps put into perspective what a Chipotle or what, you know, a farmer's insurance or a state farm might be, you know, they've got 12, 14,000 square feet, bringing in about 3 million annually, so.
Okay. That is helpful.
Yeah. Rite Aid is about 5 million annually in sales. Marshalls is about 9 million. So I was just walking, driving through the city in my head and picking out the largest square footage buildings and that's where I kind of came up with those two, yeah.
My concern comes about with our truly local businesses such as our local restaurants. There are a few that, you know, are completely local. Do we have any data on what their gross revenues are?
Yeah.
The unfortunate thing about the Department of Revenue stuff is we only get to see top level, $780 million. We don't get to see the books. We don't know what Red Robin did versus Mr. Jalapeno. That's not our business to know and it's not public record for the state to provide that to us. So, you know, really it'd just be a matter of looking at those chain restaurants and kind of determining, because those are publicly traded, that information is available. We're not getting it through the state. We're getting it, basically, all the, all these businesses, chain businesses, they base everything on square footage. So their annual reports show a square footage, average sale per square foot, and then I'm looking at county data to look at what the building's square footage is and calculate that out. The small business stuff, I don't imagine that Mr. Jalapeno and Don Julio are bringing in more than the shoe store, but, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think about Famous Footwear, right? And what they might be bringing in, I guess, customers wise. I don't know that I see an influx of a lot of customers going in and out of there. And so I'm imagining the 3 million, I guess, is a steady thing. But, you know, you look at one of our local businesses like Glow and they have customers in there constantly. And then so that, then that makes me wonder, okay, there, one place is selling shoes, one place is selling, you know, drinks and dinner. I would imagine they would make more, but I guess I would want to know what that data did.
Yeah.
Even if it was a comparison of a restaurant, a local restaurant, I feel like that would give us a better idea.
And I'm trying to pull Red Robin right now.
Yeah, basically, the information that Justin provided you, it's protected information. The Department of Revenue doesn't let us tell you how much each business brings in, so he's correct. So in him Googling and finding out their annual reports and stuff, he's being quite stealthy there and kudos to him for doing that on the fly, but it's not something I can give you. I heard insurance mentioned and insurance would be exempt.
Awesome.
Okay.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Swam, thank you. You know, a couple of thoughts because it's really kind of a ultra complicated tax thing. I'm interested in how we can trap this, any revenue to direct it towards the parks or what have you. So making sure that if it does come about, that it's like directed to that. But I would like to note, you know, it is an extraordinarily regressive kind of weird tax because the way the state does things, they do it on the gross revenues that the mayor mentioned. mayor mentions, and that, that is extraordinarily difficult for some businesses and others they don't even care about. Because when you're talking about a retail business where you're selling hard goods, you're talking about a tremendous amount of inventory that you're dealing with, your margins are ultra-small, and these little things are really difficult for you to deal with. When you're doing like services or something, they're sales taxable, if you're a dog groomer or whatever, that, those aren't, those are, a lot of services, things that are exempt, that, that is, these are a lot easier to deal with, so this tax is really hard on some businesses, not on others, you gotta remember, sales tax, if you're talking about Kroger or what have you, they're a very large business, yes, but the most of it is not sales tax, but I don't think that it applies, right? For the gross revenues on still, is, maybe it does.
Yeah.
Kroger being a grocery store that's not in the area, it'd be Fred Meyer's.
So, even though they're not sales taxes, still, the BNO stills.
It, it applies to gross sales overall, not, it's not taxable.
Okay, yeah, right, yeah, exactly. And another concept, of course, is, you know, why isn't every other city doing it around us? Because, you know, it's my understanding that Auburn just instituted this recently, actually, just this year.
Yeah, January first.
So, does that make Bonny Lake kind of a little odd duck in the bunch, where, you know, if you're trying to attract businesses, that they're gonna say, well, I'm not gonna go up to Bonny Lake, because I don't wanna deal with the BNO, I'm gonna go in Sumner, or I'm gonna go to, you know, to other places, because we're, we're, we're not here, so don't know about that one. Like I said, I've not really kind of stepped one way or another, but I have heard some businesses, you know, when you're talking about not wanting to impact the smaller businesses. Of course, you know, small business is that, you know, the definition of a small business, when you say small business, Washington State is, I forget, Justin might know, it's like a hundred-and-so odd employees or something like that, so anything under that. The, the other, the smaller, you know, I don't even like to use mom and pops, because they're all, you know, not a lot of employees. Anyways, the concept is that if you remove air from the room, there's less air to spend, and if you're thinking that you're just gonna tax Costco's of the world, and the Krogers of the world, and that people are still gonna have the same amount of money to spend, it's not exactly as accurate as you may think. Because now, the person that had to pay more, because Kroger and Costco are going to pass that through to everyone and anyone, which is nice, because we got Taha Lee coming over here and spending their money, but it's bad when our people have to do it, because they have less, you know, money to spend, for your smaller businesses, so the people that would have money to spend in the businesses that you didn't tax, those have less of it. No, I don't know, I don't know where I'm at on this, I'm worried that we're being too one-offy on the city of Bonny Lake, because, you know, it would be much more of a no-brainer to me if Sumner, forty, every other little entity, why, why aren't they doing it? Why is Auburn just now like, oh, wow, we should do this? Do you have an insight on why we haven't?
Well, my speculation is that the cities, even though they do surround us, they have their own issues, like such, like we do.
Sure.
You know, primarily, such as why we're dealing with such a high water and sewage rate, because we're connected to Sumner, because we're on top of the hill, and all the infrastructure that we have to put forth to, to go down there makes us unique, and, and so.
You know how much people love that water and sewer rates of Bonny Lake, they're like, man, I wanna go to Bonny Lake, I just need the point made, right?
Yes. But, but anyway, that, I mean, that's purely my speculation on, on, on why we would be doing it.
Were forty, there are forty-nine cities listed on here of the. Percent. Cities, assuming this list is complete of all cities that are doing this.
Are, are we considering this strictly because we want to be able to apply for a parks bond? Or is this something that we're discussing because of all of the possible money that we're going to have to be putting towards new employees and raises and things like that?
My personal preference is I won't vote for anything that's not earmarked specifically for parks. Now, like Sherri said, this is a two-step process, the first step is passing it, and by passing it, I don't think we can earmark it for that, but immediately after passing that, we can earmark it at that point, right now, the funds don't exist. And I don't, I don't know, Sherri, because this goes specifically to general funds as the revenue source, we can't put that caveat into the initial, it has to be done post-acceptance?
So, the ordinance, if you, if the majority of the council supports it, and I bring it forward, the ordinance sets out what the BNO tax will be. Sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback, I hope you can hear me. So, the ordinance will set out what the BNO tax will be. A separate process would be for you guys to determine how much you want to go to the general fund, or if you want it all to go to parks. That's a discussion we're gonna need to have. When this BNO tax passes, we won't implement it right away, so you're gonna have time to have out that conversation and direct me where that money needs to be going. From the conversations we had at the retreat, yes, the general fund does need more revenue. However, it's up to you, the council, to decide whether or not you want to do that, or if you, if you want people to consider cuts in the budget process.
And with that, Mr. Anderson, we, I believe, I was reading of the model ordinance that you provided, we would actually have to, or the council would have to make it, in other words, we would take this model ordinance and, and craft it to what the city would want. And, and then, I believe it, it states that, yes, you have to pass the BNO tax before you can, you know, divvy up, you know, what we collect. Is, am I wrong?
Not, not technically, because it's technically unrestricted revenue, so that's why it's not part of this process. That revenue is unrestricted, meaning it would go to the general fund. A budgetary process would set the money aside differently, which is what we would need to do. I need direction to know where that money goes. Just like, um, Councilmember Evans passed an ordinance, oh, well, gosh, what was that, about a year ago, directing that we had the cumulative reserve fund? And that money, it's aside as directed, and so, at any given time, you can look and see that there's the money that Councilmember Evans pushed through about a year ago, I believe. And that money cannot get spent without council authority.
How much do we have in that?
What, what did we transfer, Justin, was it two-point-eight?
That was enough to cover, what, sixty days of our general fund coverage and.
Yeah. I'd have to look, I believe it was like two-point-five or something.
Where to apply or something. Okay, now, do you need to add a commentary on, oh, Councilman Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Councilmember Evans' work on this, and I, I do agree with him, what he's put together, has these points here. We need to something for our parks, right now, we have no funds for parks with that availability for, that we discussed before, people from Taha Lee, those areas, come to our city and want to use our parks here, and also shop here, we should increase the retail sales on the BNO tax. I think we need to do that as soon as we, if we do pass this, and earmark the majority of it, not all of it, toward parks, decide how much we really wanna spend there. So, this, this is the only option we have, otherwise, we might just sell the property on Midtown, there's no, I mean, Midtown area, there's parks, so no, no money to help pay for that. So, the council would decide, do we wanna develop it? I don't wanna chart, put a bond against our citizens in the city, but that's, this would be the best way to be able to then afford it, and for larger businesses to pay for it, and not small ones.
And, uh, Councilman Baldwin?
You guys know I love parks so much, and I have talked about them a lot, I have small children. But, you know, I, I kinda feel like that family, you know, that's going out, and they're spending presents, like they're buying presents for Christmas, and they can't pay their, you know, utility bills, and they can't pay for their gas, and they're not paying their rent. And the reason why I'm saying that is because, as we have started to look more and more at the budget, and we are also seeing that even amongst our employees, we're missing people that we need to hire and have on helping. It's like, it's, the bus is running, but once the wheels come off, we're not moving anymore. And it did, it did stick out to me a lot when we were at the retreat, and Sherri had talked to us about, you know, that, the potential for some of this money going towards just covering the general fund. Simply because, you know, again, I, I told you guys before, I, I have a problem with us passing on any kind of debt, or, you know, I mean, even if you think about parks maintenance, for example, we have one person. One. I, I've talked to some other cities, just to ask, is that normal? Is, is that what you have? And it's not. And so, you know, it, it's even in the clerk's office, we're talking about public records, you know, we, we don't want a liability against the city, but they're maxed out in that office. And so, I don't know, there are just some concerns that are, that are coming up, I, I love parks, I want parks, I have kids, I don't want them to be grown before I can use them in Bonny Lake, but you can't go and buy the Christmas presents if you can't pay your bills. So, I don't know, I, that's kind of wearing that with this potential to have money coming in. Yeah.
If I could just piggyback off that.
Sure.
The only reason why I'm not in support of that is I wanna put some onus on the administration to come up with fixing some of the budget. Right now, we have a completely unfunded department, and that's what I'm trying to fill, and, yeah, this could solve that, but I don't want this to be the, oh, we don't have to do anything now, we just solved this problem. We still have a problem on a rest here, and, and, and they're separate to me, and I wanna put some responsibility back on the administration to come up with somehow figuring out some other means of revenues or cost cutting, before just, you know, putting your hand in the, the people's cookie jar, and still leaving the department unfunded that has been for a long time. The other quick thing to that, just, we're talking about revenue sources, I know no one here is necessarily in favor of the marijuana store, but there is still always, that's about a fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year revenue stream to any city that those are in, as a potential, in your, potential general fund revenue as well, so.
Councilmember, it's probably me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that particular issue pushed to a referendum a few years ago in the, in our populous voting?
Yes, yeah, it wasn't a, it was a non-binding, it was an advisory vote, there was no.
Yeah, we don't actually. All of them.
Yeah. Like, like I said, I'm not necessarily in favor of that, that is just another. Just one more quick thing, average Applebee's is two-point-three million, and that place is always packed, so if you think about square footage and alcohol sales and things that go on in there, you know, you can kind of figure they're probably about, Glow is probably about a third of the size and everything in there, so.
And now, tonight, we're just assigned to, we're gonna do a BNO tax, and then we can work out what that might should go.
Yeah, I mean, we may, we may say it is a two-million-dollar threshold when it gets down to that one, you know. I wanted, I wanted, I, I literally wrote down one million and one dollars, because I wanted to be, 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 be small business supporter in all of the states.
I appreciate that so much.
But Sherri says, no, that's way too much money.
We are, Sherri's laughing too. And, on, on a fair and polite note, I can't, I can't confirm it absolutely, because the locals, actually, from Representative Schreier's office, we very well could be giving three-million dollars for a four-on-one infrastructure bill, specifically to help out with, you know, T W U, infrastructure, the municipal over there, so that's something that's coming in, right?
To help lower water rates.
Well, we, oh.
Am I supposed to bring back an ordinance with a million-dollar exemption?
I'd say yes.
I'm, I'm having a hard time with this, not looking at other options, like, well, so, the, the real hard part that, until the retreat, I consider this discussion a way to fund work, right? This was daddy's second job, or mommy's second job. But now, it's a little more complicated, because it's like, how do we deal with a potential budget shortfall? And staff, the city. Yeah, so it's complicated, but if it, if we didn't have a, a budget question outside of parks, I would have a really hard time for this, because I think there, I still would like to, to fund parks, I'd like to put that before the voters, and ask the voters, do you wanna pay for parks? Do you want us to tax you for parks? That's the question I'd like answered. Last time we asked them that, they said overwhelmingly, no. You know, has anything changed? I think a lot has sort of changed. I think we could probably do some different messaging, but I wouldn't be surprised if the voters said. Now, the city budget and grow, and, and where we're at, kind of complicates it, but I'm still having a hard time digging my way through to a BNO, a BNO tax, because it is sort of regressive. It will, those large, the problem, smaller organizations will, will wind up absorbing a larger percentage of that tax out of their P and L sheets, but the larger organizations are experts, and they will find a way to pass this on, right? And, and they will not absorb it, so, I'm a little leery, I like the idea of getting all the people from Taha Lee, right? I really do. There are nice people out there, but I would really like a way to have them support us instead of our shortfalls, because they drive on our road to use our, our traffic lights, but not sure the BNO tax is the way to do it. I still like the, yeah, I still like the poll wrote out this.
Talked about that.
No, I'd be, that'd be wonderful. And, and for the record, that was Councilmember Fine. Okay, we have any, oh, Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, just in response to Councilmember Evans, great point, you always have great points, thank you. I guess the next question would be in regards to, you know, you feeling like the city should take some of the, you know, responsibility in figuring out, I guess, what to do. Is there, I, I also, I also caution that, that we not necessarily put out a tall order without some specific processes behind it, so then my questions would be, okay, who are we asking to, to do what?
Well, we approve the mayor's budget, so that's really.
Does the mayor then?
Yeah, I mean, the administration, yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's what we are, I mean, the, the primary goal of what we do is approving the mayor's budget, so, you know, we can guide him and tell him, you might not wanna put that forward, or, or, you know, when, when we hear about it, but ultimately, it's, you know, up to us to say yes or no to what he proposes to us.
And Councilmember.
I think if we said we weren't gonna support a BNO tax, the budget the mayor brings forward, it'd be different than if we said, yes, we're gonna support a BNO.
Well, yeah, but.
That's the harsh way out.
Right, well, true, but, you know, as Councilmember Evans says, I'm much more in his camp of dedicating his money to parks if it comes about, right? So, that means that your budget problem doesn't change for general fund, if it's dedicated, right? So, but I'm hearing. Yeah, but if I'm hearing, you know, other council members that are saying, well, we need this BNO to pay for our budget shortfall, and it doesn't need to go all to parks, right? There's two different scenarios there.
Yeah.
The, the administration.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It must be, hopefully, if it does come forward and it passes, that it is parks.
Well, I mean, we could reverse it and say, in the event that Bonny Lake ever implements a BNO tax, the purpose of that is to fund parks, five-on-one, or whatever that fund is.
Exactly.
Next week, we pass the BNO tax, but that already triggered at that point, rather than after the fact where, yeah.
I could bring the vote forward at the same time.
Is, is this actually gonna go to the finance committee? Or is this something that we're talking about?
I think we'd probably.
Putting a percentage to, to nine?
Well, I think we'd have multiple discussions on it, at workshops before we can get to a vote.
Right.
I mean, if she, if Sherri put it together, it wouldn't come before us as necessarily a Tuesday work, or Tuesday council meeting vote, I think we would have another discussion on it at a workshop, or at least I recommend to Terry that we do that before, so we can dot our i's and cross our t's, and, and answer any questions we, we might have in between there. We're not in a rush to do this, and we. We're not in a rush to do this and we do have some time to.
Are we putting this vote on tonight then? Or we're just telling her?
Sherri directed.
We're considering it and this is the percentage that we want you to, that we want you to look at?
Yeah, 2.002% million dollar cap and then.
Or a million one.
Yeah, million, million one. Can you make that a million one?
No.
Yes, you can. You just back out that last zero and you put a one.
You're, you're our accountant, you just take it a one as opposed to a zero. Okay, well, given that, um, and I do agree with Councilmember Evans that this is not a quick process to work on a solution. Um, I move that we are done discussing unless Councilmember Klein has another comment.
Is it, is, is this a topic and that we would have a public, uh, hearing on? Is that?
No public, no public hearing needed.
Not required. It's not required.
Correct. That's correct.
And that, that would actually be very advantageous, we'd get our public, our citizens' , uh, reaction.
I would make it contingent on continuing the contracts with the school district, we're guaranteed to get it.
Okay, well, given that, the discussion, I believe those are all of our items. We have no more business, um, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.